Good evening. Convening this Concord Township Zoning Commission meeting of Tuesday, April the 4th. Call to order, roll call of members. Heather, please.
Mr. Terriaco?
Here.
Mr. Langenfelter?
Here.
Mr. Repper?
Here.
Mr. Schindler?
Here.
Mr. Eiffelise?
Here. Thank you, Heather. Thank you for stepping in tonight, Ron. Appreciate that for Rich here this evening. The first order of business on our agenda is a public hearing for the following zone text amendments. At this point in time, we will convene the public hearing. This is being convened for zoning text amendments to the Concord Township zoning resolution as initiated by motion of the zoning commission. I believe at this point in time, I am to read all the amendments into the record for the public hearing.
Yes.
Right. Amendment number one. Revised section 5.02a 105. Indoor commercial recreation to allow a restaurant as an accessory use. Amendment number two. Revised section 22.03 Table of Uses. To amend the list of permitted uses, conditional uses, and accessory uses in the commercial and industrial districts. Amendment number three. Revised section 22.07e number four. Charity boxes to limit the number allowed and add location requirement. Amendment number four. Revised section 13.08 Child or Adult Daycare Center to eliminate reference to the M and RD2 districts and require compliance with the Ohio Fire Code. Amendment number five. Revised section 13.16 Adult Group Home to require compliance with the Ohio Fire Code. Amendment number six. Revised section 13.19 Research and Development Labs to allow said use in the Gateway Health District. Amendment number seven. Revised section 13.21 Garden or Nursery Retail Sales, Non-Wholesale, to allow said use in the B2 General Business District. Amendment number eight. Revised section 13.25 Gas Stations to eliminate Capital District and to require compliance with the Ohio Fire Code. Amendment number nine. Revised section 13.26 Car Wash to delete Capital District and to add conditions for accessory uses and vacuum areas. Amendment number 10. Revised section 13.32 Outdoor Storage and/or Display in association with a permitted or conditional use to add location and screening requirements for outdoor storage areas. And finally, amendment number 11. Revised section 13.36 Innovative Site PD to require the plan to indicate the precise use or land use proposed and to add permitted uses and revise accessory uses allowed in the district. Having read the 11 amendments into the record, the public hearing is open for any comment. I presume, Heather, there's no one on the phone at this point.
There's no one on the phone this evening?
Point in time, and we have no public participation here this evening. So I will close the public portion of the hearing. At this point in time, we have a letter received, members, from the Lake County Planning Commission in regards to the proposed text amendments. Procedurally, again, I believe it's appropriate to read the letter into the record. So, the letter's addressed to Heather from the Lake County Planning and Community Development dated March 30th, 2023 regarding the text amendments to sections 5.02 Table 22.03, sections 22.07, 13.08, 13.16, 13.19, 13.21, 13.25, 13.26, 13.32, and 13.36. Dear Ms. Freeman, The Lake County Planning Commission took under consideration the above-mentioned zoning district change at their regularly scheduled meeting on Tuesday, March 28th, 2023. The Lake County Planning Commission recommended you make the text amendments with the following suggestions. First bullet. Do not make the change to the definition of indoor commercial recreation. Add a definition of restaurant accessory. That could cover a bar, snack bar, counter service restaurant, or a table service restaurant. It can be used for other uses besides indoor commercial recreation. Bullet number two. Make child and adult daycare a conditional accessory use in GH Gateway Health. Bullet number three. Do not add outdoor display to RD2 Research and Development 2. There are no businesses in the RD2 Research and Development 2 that would need outdoor display. Bullet number four. Change 13.32b Outdoor Display into section 13.33 and renumber current sections or add it as 13.37. Outdoor Storage and outdoor display are separated on Table 22.03, but they are together in one section in the Conditional Use Chapter, Section 13.32. It should be separate sections in Condition Use Chapters. And finally, bullet number five. Make sure all of the references to Capital District are the same. Section 22.01 is a reference to Capital (C) District. Section 13.36 has C Capital District. And the changes to 13.36A, B, and C have it as Capital. We're available to help with any aspect of this recommendation. If you have any questions, please feel free to call David Radaci, Director, yours truly, Rhea Benton, Secretary. Thanks to the Planning Commission for their review and comments. At this point in time, first of all, to recognize the work this group, this body has, and Heather in getting us to this point, there's a lot of time and really good discussion in arriving at these revisions on these amendments. So, thanks for the hard work in getting us to this point. We went through these amendments in fairly good detail in the last few meetings over time. So at this point, with the recommendations from the Planning Commission, I defer to Heather to comment on each of these recommendations from the Planning Commission.
Okay. Yes, I'd be happy to. So I did review their recommendations, and I guess we'll just go through them individually. The first bullet point recommendation really has to do with amendment number one. And this is the indoor commercial recreation. We are initially proposing to add a line that indicated that they may be included, that indoor commercial recreation facilities may include a restaurant as an accessory use. I, after further looking at Planning Commission's recommendation and taking a closer look at our existing Table of Uses, 22.03, under the accessory use section, we do list that restaurants slash cafeterias or pharmacies could be a permitted accessory use when in association with a permitted or conditional use, as long as it's conducted and entered only from within the principal building. So our thoughts initially on adding this, we're looking at an establishment that might have a restaurant component along with the indoor commercial recreation. But we may already have this covered, I guess, under our table. So I, you know, maybe we don't need to amend the definition, and we can defer to the table and/or come up with a more specific definition for if we feel like we need a definition for accessory use as a restaurant. But we do already have that listed as a separate permitted accessory use, like the county was suggesting that we do. We just don't have a definition for it, per se. So, I would be, I would support their comments on maybe not changing our definition. I think we might already actually have it covered under that table.
What's comment on, thank you, thank you, Heather. Is it clear to the board what's?
So you have an issue maybe the way the verbiage is that they use? It doesn't meet what we have? Is that, if I understand you correctly?
I'm sorry, I don't understand.
The verbiage that they use when they made their comment. It's, everything is still there, it's just that the way it's presented compared to ours is?
Oh, right. They, what the county was suggesting was that we add a separate definition for it. That way, if there were other uses that we wanted to allow a restaurant as an accessory use to, that we could allow that. But this table already does allow that. If you look at Table 22.03, actually on page 22.07, under accessory uses, it's like the third one from the bottom of the page. So in the RD2, GBGHB1, and again, I I think this does in fact do what the Planning Commission is suggesting that we do, other than providing for a separate definition.
Okay.
So, and I think we could, I don't, I don't really see any harm, actually, either, in just adding it to our definition, because it's actually then doing both. Like, so maybe we still add it to the definition, and then the table covers us under the other uses that would likely want to have this as an accessory use. I thought by adding it to the definition that it would make it more clear for some uses that have come up recently that is kind of a mix between the both that might be questionable. But I think it would give a clear direction to potential users that might want to do something with this concept.
Okay. Thank you.
So would we add a definition the next time around?
We could if we felt like we needed to. But I think, yeah, but right now, we don't have a definition.
We don't need to.
Right. I think, I think what we have is okay, adding it to the indoor commercial as we have it, and it's almost cross-referenced in the table here for other uses that might want it as well.
Put a yellow sticky next time?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, yeah, yeah.
So in other words, speaking to amendment number one, then, we have, we have it to allow that addition on 105. Indoor commercial recreation facilities may include a restaurant as an accessory use.
Yep.
So by not having a definition of what a restaurant, is that an issue?
Well, we do define restaurant in table service and counter service. We do have, we have definitions for those, yes.
Okay. And it's listed, like you said, it's listed as an accessory use?
Yes.
So I guess, my understanding is, you agree in part. We don't need to make the change to the definition of indoor commercial recreation. We can keep that.
We can keep it as it is, or?
No, as proposed.
Oh, yes, I think we can keep it as proposed.
Keep it as proposed, but the second part is add the definition?
Right.
Down the road, okay.
Right.
That's what?
So what I would suggest is not maybe, not accepting their recommendation.
Not accepting, right. In other words, our amendment, you see, our amendment would stand, and then we would consider definition recreation. Any other comments?
No, that was, my question was going to be, so then if we decide to take their recommendation, so then, from a procedural standpoint, would we, in the affirmative, vote for the amendment number one, and then all vote no? Follow me?
Yes, if we agree with.
Right, I'm just saying, so would we still, would we just scratch amendment number one? Or would we accept amendment number one, and then all vote no not to accept it? From a procedural standpoint, you see what I'm saying?
I believe what we just said is we don't agree with the change.
No, I understand that.
So we would approve amendment number one.
Right, I understand that. But I'm saying, if we were to go with their recommendation, which would have been countered, countered
Correct.
to what we
We would vote no.
amendment, so would we just scrap voting on amendment number one, just take it off the list? Or would we vote to accept amendment number one, and then all vote no?
Correct. To answer your question, Andy, yes, so.
Procedurally.
Your motion always has to be in the affirmative.
Right, exactly. That's why I was just curious, because it's in the public hearing. So just like, there's a couple other we're going to tackle here as we go down the list. If we decide to accept that, then from a procedural standpoint, do we then just basically go to amendment number four or number 10 and say, you know, we're going to change it to what the recommendation is from the Lake County Planning Commission?
Do we have to say?
And then vote no on that?
I think for clarification, you would want to make the motion to approve with the modification. And then state specifically what you want the modification to be. You don't need to reference back to the Planning Commission's recommendation.
Gotcha, okay.
If there are modifications based on what they had said.
Just a procedural issue, just want to make sure, you know.
Oh, yeah, no, no, that's good, it's good to hash it out.
Okay.
Good.
Okay, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the second one, I don't necessarily agree that, I don't think we need to add the child and adult daycare as a conditional accessory use to the Gateway Health. I don't know if there's any discussion on that. I just, I didn't think that, that fit very well with some of the other permitted principal and conditional uses. That it wouldn't be likely that we would need that. Number, the third bullet point on their recommendation really affects our amendment number two. So did the other one, I'm sorry. And this, this one I do agree with. We were separating out the outdoor display and the outdoor storage area on this table. And the RD2 already had listed outdoor display as a conditional accessory use in that district, and the county was recommending that we take that out because they didn't feel like there are any uses in the RD2 that would really need outdoor display. Yeah, and I do agree with that. So I think that I would recommend that when we get to the vote on amendment number two, that you would approve it with that modification to delete the outdoor display as a conditional use, accessory use in the RD2.
But that doesn't apply to amendment number 10. This is just two.
Right, that would affect amendment number two.
Yeah, two is outdoor storage, but on a different.
Right, yes.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Well, actually, there is a reference.
There's a reference.
Yes, there is a reference to it in section 10. So we would have to make sure that the, that, or section 13, that we that we would also delete that from section 13.3.
3.2?
3.2, yes. Because, right, it does reference all the districts that those uses are permitted in. And then the fourth bullet point from the Planning Commission. Yeah, the fourth bullet point, this affects amendment number 10. This has to do with 13.32 under the conditional uses. Since we're separating outdoor storage and outdoor display into two different accessory type uses, we probably should separate them and have their own section numbers and under the Conditional Use Permit Chapter of the resolution. So we could do it either way, however you guys would like. I can peel out outdoor display and make that 13.33 and then renumber everything after that, or we could stick it at the end and make it a new section 13.36. Might make sense to put it right after the outdoor storage instead of putting it on the end and then just renumber everything.
Do you, do we, is that material to approving amendment number 10? I mean, it's a?
I think what we would do is we would want to approve it with the modification to make outdoor display its own section number 13.33 and then renumber the subsequent uses.
So the motion would be?
Yeah, we would need to reflect that as a modification.
Or amendment number, yeah, okay.
We would want to make sure that that was a modification. And then for the last one from the Planning Commission, make sure all your references to the Capital District are consistent throughout the document. I do agree with that. This affects amendment number 11, but really, it's throughout the whole entire zoning resolution. I did try to see if there was some consistency between all the other references to the districts throughout the resolution. There's a couple different ways we could go about this. As they stated, there's three different, at least three different versions in the resolution. I think it probably should be either the Capital, C comma Capital, or we do the Capital and then the C in parentheses District. I think those two are the, how it's referred to most in the resolution. So if that's important to be consistent throughout, we could amend amendment number 11 to update the reference to the Capital District to be consistent throughout the resolution.
But they're all saying the same thing.
Yeah.
They are, yeah.
So, why bother? I understand consistency, and I'm all for it. But for something that's already on the books, why bother?
I'm not disagreeing, I'm putting a question mark on that myself.
I will put a yellow sticky.
For later, yeah. And we could, we could very well do another house cleaning amendment and make sure all the districts are being referred to consistently.
You're right, yeah.
Yeah.
Good point.
Yeah.
You could make a research project out of it.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Well, thank you, Heather, okay. So I'm going to take, since we're, this is active in our mind, and it's out of order on the agenda, and I had already closed the public portion of the public hearing. We're still in the public hearing. May I move to new business to vote to recommend approval?
Yes, first I would officially close the public hearing. And then, yeah, if you would like to switch the order of the agenda, that's totally fine.
Members, move, revise the agenda in terms of the order. I'm going to move to the new business.
Well, this is something we were considering doing down the road again, going through making modifications. We could recess this and make the changes, and then continue on with the changes, and then adopt what we want to do when it's all finished to everyone's satisfaction.
What members feel, I feel without in participation from the public on the public hearing, which we're still in, these are rather modifications to what we've already gotten to a point of approving the amendments. I don't see any real significance in just approving them with modifications for those, if we elect to, for those as recommended by Heather, which are just a couple of them.
Okay, I was just, yeah, just a point.
If that's what the wishes of the board would be. Let me first move to closing, officially closing the public hearing for the zoning text amendments that are under consideration this evening. And revising our agenda this evening and moving to new business to vote to recommend approval of the zoning text amendments and to take them individually. First of all, amendment number one, as it reads, revised section 5.02a 105 Indoor Commercial Recreation to Allow a Restaurant as an Accessory Use. What are the wishes of the board?
You need a motion?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to approve amendment number one, which is revised section 5.02a 105 Indoor Commercial Recreation to allow a restaurant as an accessory use.
I have a motion to approve, do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve amendment number one, revised section 5.02a 105 Indoor Commercial Recreation to Allow a Restaurant as an Accessory Use. Any further discussion? If not, roll call. Heather, please.
Mr. Repper?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Terriaco?
Yes.
Mr. Langenfelter?
Aye.
Mr. Eiffelise?
Yes. Thank you. Moving on to amendment number two. Revised section 22.03 Table of Uses to amend the list of permitted uses, conditional uses, and accessory uses in the commercial and industrial districts. What are the wishes?
So moved.
We have a motion to approve amendment number two.
I'll second.
And we have a second. Any further discussion?
No.
If not, roll call, Heather, amendment number two.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Repper?
Yes.
Mr. Langenfelter?
Aye.
Mr. Terriaco?
Yes.
Mr. Eiffelise?
Yes, amendment number two stands approved, thank you. Amendment number three. Revised section 22.07e for charity boxes to limit the number allowed and to add location requirement. What are the wishes of the board?
Make a motion.
We have a motion to approve amendment number three.
I second.
And a second. Any further discussion? If not, roll call, Heather?
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Repper?
Yes.
Mr. Terriaco?
Yes.
Mr. Langenfelter?
Aye.
Mr. Eiffelise?
Yes, thank you. Amendment number four. Revised section 13.08 Child or Adult Daycare Center to eliminate the reference to the M and RD2 districts and require compliance with the Ohio Fire Code.
And make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
I'll second.
And a second, thank you. Any further discussion? If not, roll call.
Mr. Langenfelter?
Aye.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Repper?
Yes.
Mr. Terriaco?
Yes.
Mr. Eiffelise?
Yes, thank you. Amendment number five. Revised section 13.16 Adult Group Home to require compliance with the Ohio Fire Code.
So moved.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? If not, roll call on amendment number five.
Mr. Terriaco?
Yes.
Mr. Repper?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Langenfelter?
Aye.
Mr. Eiffelise?
Yes, thank you. Amendment number six. Amendment number six. Revised section 13.19 Research and Development Labs to allow said use in the Gateway Health District.
I saw move.
We have a motion to approve amendment number six.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? If not, roll call, Heather?
Mr. Eiffelise?
Yes.
Mr. Langenfelter?
Aye.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Repper?
Yes.
Mr. Terriaco?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on, amendment number seven. Revised section 13.21 Garden or Nursery Retail Sales, Non-Wholesale, to allow said use in the B2 General Business District.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
I second.
And a second. Any further discussion? If not, roll call, Heather, please.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Repper?
Yes.
Mr. Terriaco?
Yes.
Mr. Eiffelise?
Yes.
Mr. Langenfelter?
Aye.
Thank you. Amendment number eight. Revised section 13.25 Gas Stations to Delete Capital District and to Require Compliance with the Ohio Fire Code.
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
I'll second.
And a second. Any further discussion on amendment number eight? If not, roll call, please.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Langenfelter?
Aye.
Mr. Repper?
Yes.
Mr. Terriaco?
Yes.
Mr. Eiffelise?
Yes, thank you. Amendment number nine. Revised section 13.26 Car Wash to Delete Capital District and to Add Conditions for Accessory Uses and Vacuum Areas.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
I second.
And a second. Very pleased with this one. Any further discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Mr. Terriaco?
Yes.
Mr. Repper?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Langenfelter?
Aye.
Mr. Eiffelise?
Yes, thank you. Amendment number 10. Revised section 13.32 Outdoor Storage and/or Display in Association with a Permitted or Conditional Use to Add Location and Screening Requirements for Outdoor Storage Areas.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Thank you. I'll put this into discussion. This is the item where Heather had recommended that we agree with the modification to not add the outdoor display, am I on the right? Fourth bullet point, Heather, I'm sorry.
That one actually was overlooked, you guys, you didn't accept the modification.
Yes, yes, I just noticed that myself.
Yeah, that's okay, the trustees will have an opportunity to take a stab at that.
Yep, that's, yes.
This was the one under, the fourth bullet point was to separate out the outdoor display from the outdoor storage in section 13, was the Planning Commission's recommendation, so.
Yes.
If you agreed with that, we would really, we would need a motion to approve with that modification.
You want to redo your motion there, Ira?
But, yeah, and then let me know if you want it, or please state with the motion if you would, how you would want that to work. Your outdoor.
That's why specifically it did not.
If outdoor display would become section 13.33 and then everything would be numbered after.
Can we just vote no?
No.
No.
No. All your motions have to be in the affirmative.
Well, and I just.
He did make, he did make a motion.
I just made a motion and it was second.
But he did not include, his motion did not include the modification, right?
Right.
So I asked him if he wanted to redo his motion, which he has the ability to do.
Correct.
So.
But he asked me if he could vote.
Right.
So, so do we just say, and include the fourth bullet coming from the planning commission?
No.
No, no.
You need to state specifically what you want the modification to be.
To split the two.
To change, you could actually just read this first portion.
Change 13.32B?
Yeah, change 13.32B, outdoor display into a section 13.33 and renumber current sections.
And drop the rest.
Yep. Yeah. Come on, Hiram, you can do it.
No way, no way.
Yeah, you can do it.
What, what happens to the, what we have? Do we still say in addition to? We want to split them?
No, we're approving it, we're approving the proposed amendments from number 10 with one modification.
With the modification.
With the one modification.
Modification.
And that's basically the first steps?
Yeah.
Yes, the first steps.
Stops right here.
No, begins here.
Yeah?
Ends here. Ends here. Right. Need to add.
Right.
No way, are you sure?
Yes. It says or.
Not quite, it ends, you would, your modification would end at sections. You wouldn't, you wouldn't say or add it, you would just say, renumber the current sections and period.
Stop.
Stop, right.
If I may, I will change my motion.
There we go.
For the record, Hiram, restate the motion for amendment number 10.
Okay. Revise section 3 point, or 13.32, outdoor storage and/or display in association with permitted or conditional use to add location and screening requirements for outdoor storage areas. In addition, change 13.32B, outdoor display into 13.33 and renumber current sections.
Very good. We have a motion to, we have a motion to approve with modification.
I'll second.
And we have a second to that. Any further discussion? If not, roll call. Amendment number 10.
Okay, Mr. Terriaco?
Yes.
Mr. Repper?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Langenfelter?
Aye.
Mr. Eiffelise?
Yes.
Thanks for your comment.
Amendment number two is approved as modified.
Correct.
Amendment number 11, revise section 13.36, innovative site PD to require the plan to indicate the precise use or land use proposed and to add permitted uses and revise accessory uses allowed in the district.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
I second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Repper?
Yes.
Mr. Terriaco?
Yes.
Mr. Langenfelter?
Aye.
Mr. Eiffelise?
Yes, thank you. To the discretion of the board, would it be appropriate to go back to amendment number two? Having overlooked the recommendation, if we so choose, recommend the recommendation as, as recommended by the Light County Planning Commission, but also suggested by Heather, to do not add the outdoor display to RD2 as, as indicated in the table of uses in amendment number two.
I'm not sure if we can go back and redo that vote at this point.
Oh.
And unfortunately, the mic isn't here.
It's already.
I thought it was up to us.
Oh.
Well, technically, we can do whatever the hell we want.
That's what I.
Yeah.
If, if there was some, I'll take responsibility for that. I don't see this as a, I just see it procedural. If the board agrees with going back to an item on the agenda that we previously voted on to reconsider, but I think I would ask for a motion to reconsider our approval of amendment number two first.
Would it, would it make sense to just push it up to the trustees and let them?
That's what I was trying to avoid.
Oh, okay.
Let them do some more.
It's just seemed, it just seemed a little, it seemed very, they have bigger things on their plate, I think.
No, they don't.
Okay, well, can I, can I ask the board if some, if there would be a motion to reconsider the vote on amendment number two?
Well, I would think there would have been an issue if we didn't, everything has already been closed, you know? And now we're voting on it, which is a separate issue, I think, in itself. And like Andy says, as a board member, we could, I'm sure, change our minds as long as it's agreed upon by the majority of the board.
Again, that's, that's why I'm asking, would a board member make a motion to reconsider their vote on amendment number two?
Sure.
Yep, okay.
So move.
We have a motion to reconsider. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. To reconsider amendment number two, roll call.
Mr. Terriaco?
Yes.
Mr. Repper?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Langenfelter?
Aye.
Mr. Eiffelise?
Yes, thank you, board members. Let's revisit amendment number two. I would ask the board to consider a motion with modifications to the approval of amendment number two as discussed.
And which recommendation was that from the?
Third bullet, do not add outdoor display.
LCPC? It was, which bullet, number?
Three, three, three bullet.
Do not add outdoor display. Okay.
The, the table of uses, we're amending the list. One of, one item in the list is the outdoor display to RD2.
RD2, there it is.
Yeah. That's on page, Heather maybe can, I know I looked it up.
Sorry.
Before.
Page 22.7?
Seven, yeah. So under.
Under accessory.
RD2, the very first one, it's indicating, do not add that into the table of uses. Under RD2.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we accept amendment number two, revise section 22.03, table of uses to amend the list of permitted uses, conditional uses and accessory uses in the commercial and industrial districts. However, with the modification of not adding outdoor display to RD2 research and development two.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve with modification. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second.
I second.
Any further discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Mr. Terriaco?
Yes.
Mr. Repper?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Langenfelter?
Aye.
And Mr. Eiffelise?
Yes, thank you, members. We are completed the amendments. Thank you for all the efforts here and the time. Thank you. With that, I revert back to our, our original agenda for approval of the minutes of March the 7th, 2023. Any comments, edits, questions on the, on the minutes?
You're up, Hiram.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the minutes as stated.
We have a motion to approve the minutes as, as submitted. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. We'll do this by, by voice vote. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Abstain.
Abstain, thank you.
I wasn't here.
The minutes of March the 7th stand approved. Correspondents, any members, Frank? Any members have correspondence since the last meeting?
Well, over the past months, now that the weather's getting warmer, my neighbors are walking around the neighborhood and we're all talking and everything about things. I've been having quite a few of them stop because they know I'm on the zoning commission. Really upset with what's been going on with the development from Reby up there on Moose Road. How the trustee, I mean not, how the zoning board allowed that to happen. And I said, wait a minute, wasn't the zoning board that allowed that to happen the way it has? After we did our course due diligence in approving, you know, the conservation to zoning, after they left our hands, they went to the trustees for their public hearing. Ever since then, they've made or gave the authorization to do what's going on there now, because it didn't come in above us anymore. Any changes or anything that the developers doing actually falls on to the trustees. So please don't come and complain to me, because it wasn't our doing that the development's happening like it is, it was the trustees doing. So that's the only thing I've had as far as correspondence regarding that particular issue.
Hiram? No formal correspondence.
I have not had any formal correspondence. Andy?
No, nothing for me.
Nothing? Okay, thank you. Public particip, our next order of business, public participation. We have no one here in attendance.
Please don't all rush to the podium. I don't want any interest.
Don't all rush. We'll close public participation. I'm just, I'm going to move a little bit of our, out of order again, without objection from members to old business. And under old business is a discussion on the zoning commission reserve jurisdiction for the IN9 Group LLC project. We have received correspondence. Okay. We received correspondence just this afternoon via email from council regarding a proposed agreement for our consideration or review and consideration between the, this body, the Township Zoning Commission and the IN9 Group LLC. First of all, I would have to ask the members if they've all had a copy. Heather had it printed out here as well. Was there ample time for you to review here in advance of the meeting?
Whereas, no.
I read through it quickly, but there's probably a lot that really, I felt should still be discussed among the board members.
Ron?
Not ample time, no.
Andy?
I, I'm like, I'm like Frank, I read through it, but I didn't really read, read it. I, my assumption, right, wrong or indifferent, is that it was prepared by Mr. Lucas. He approved it and they moved it forward and they signed it. Seems pretty good to me.
Thank you. I, I, I had some time late, just last hour or two and had a, questions that I was able to get Mike Lucas on the phone prior to the meeting. And so with the, if you allow me to kind of talk about the questions I had, at least it might see what I had and what I was able to learn from Mike responding to my concerns and questions in the agreement. The, the first page, the wheres is, is basically, if you look at the one, two, the fourth whereas indicates clearly that the, while there was a waiver, it is still, is subject to the zoning commission's retained and continued authority to review at its discretion whether the property should include a public sidewalk. So that, that jumped out at me. Okay, so we've retained the authority. We had the authority, retained the authority, so there's no change to that in the agreement. And, and the jurisdiction remains in our rights to review the subject sidewalk as what they talked to in this agreement. The more telling points for me is on page two under section one. The first thing that jumped out was the word limited in the title. Zoning Commission, limited retention of jurisdiction. But as I read through it, I had the questions and Mike responded in kind to it. So I highlighted the sections. You read the first section. The zoning commission shall retain its jurisdiction to determine the necessity for the construction. But the size and scope shall be determined and agreed to by both parties. Mike explained that the motion for approval of the waiver at the time was very open-ended. He did his best to work what he felt was an agreement in the, the party's interests, but also protected our authority and jurisdiction. But at the point of actually implementing something for construction, it was agreed to by both parties that how it is, the size and scope, must be agreed to by both parties. The design of what's going on, is it, is it going to be relocating hydrant, is it going around the hydrant, things of that nature? And I understood that. Now, it's the next part that I, had the quandary. The next part says, the zoning commission's exercise of this limited jurisdiction shall be initiated upon the occurrence of one of the following. So it begins with A, that we have the review, determination to review the sidewalk at our sole and exclusive direction.
Discretion.
Dis, what did I say?
You said direction.
Discretion, thank you. Review and determination in part may include, may include, may include consideration of letter I, double I and three. So there's the pedestrian load, infrastructure connections and other developments on adjacent properties. Or five years. So that was my question to Mike. Or. So it was A or B. And I said, my interpretation of this agreement is that we have a, agreed that within five years, we at our discretion for B, without considering I, two I and three I,
That's right.
can require the construction of the sidewalk. And he agreed. He says, that's correct.
Within five years?
Yes.
After five years?
And after five years is known for. And then, and then it goes on to say, the board shall establish within reason a designated final date for completion of the sidewalk by IN9. So it, it basically reserves our authority within five years at our discretion. And, and that's, I said, so then, so then while we said may include consideration of the other ones, it's, there's an out that basically puts the onus on the zoning commission prior to the end of five years from the date of this agreement to initiate that we want the project completed. And that's, that's, that was my concern was the or. Do we have to have a cause, another cause and effect, to, to say at four years and 10 months, we require the sidewalk to, to be installed? He said, no, you're, you're, you're within the timeframe. So my interpretation of this, as I asked Mike Lucas, was we're just giving him time. It's just a postponement for up to, up to five years. And he said, that's correct. It's a postponement. Unless something else, other things come up, pedestrian load, other connections, that we want to advance that further. So I said, well, what if we did it next month? This, what, the way it says is within five years. He didn't have a comment on that.
I, I guess the question I have, and the way I read it, is we can exercise this discretion to put the sidewalk in or not within five years, number one, yeah. Or after five years, if the pedestrian load demands it, necessary infrastructure connections of the area demands it. So that's after five years. That's the way I read it. Why wouldn't we have that in there if we don't, I mean, if we have the five years? The zoning commission's determination to review the subject public sidewalk waiver at its sole and exclusive discretion, which review and determination in part may include consideration of the following. consideration of the following. That's under A. So that's, that's one portion. We can exercise that at any time if the pedestrian load or the infrastructure or sidewalk connections, anytime.
We got one more paragraph.
Or B, within five years.
The next paragraph, then, when I asked Mike, this is not ad infinitum, it's five years. They, they, because of the open-endedness of the motion on the waiver, the five years the time limit on anything, otherwise it's gone.
Boy, that's not how I read.
I know, but that's how he explained it to me because the next paragraph says, the foregoing, which is all of that, it doesn't limit, the foregoing is limited to five years. But I agree with you, Hiram. When I first read it.
Then why do we have the, the I, double I, and triple I?
Providing that there might be development impacts that we feel must be addressed sooner within the five years, if there are things that work.
Within the five years covers it.
Agreed.
Well, it spells out, of course, the conditions.
Whatever.
Yeah, it gives the conditions. And we can use that discretion.
Put another sticky on the calendar on, what, twenty twenty-eight April, or March, make it March. Put in sidewalk.
Yeah.
That's, you can do that, isn't that what we're saying?
That's what, I, I think I asked him that at least three times because I said, I don't want to speak out of turn, Mike. It is our discretion within the five years, doesn't say when, but somewhere within the five years to, to require.
And it doesn't have to meet I or double I.
Correct, correct.
At our discretion, we say do it.
Correct.
And they agreed to that.
Having, having said all that, if, if it's the wishes, if we, we would like, I guess I'm not without counsel here this evening, and I'm, and I'm going from my conversation within the last hour, if we're not comfortable in, and I understand what's required here is a motion, an approval for me to, for the agreement for us to agree, and then for me to sign this agreement that's before us. But I defer to the wishes of members here if there is any reservation on moving forward with any lingering questions that we may have for counsel.
Good question.
Yeah.
So in two years, one of these examples come, comes about, we say, okay, it's time to put the sidewalk in. Then it's a definite. They have to put the sidewalk in. There is no, well, we got this or that. It's a definite, they have to install that side.
But we, we have, the decision-making process is to how it looks. Either move the hydrant, go around the hydrant with the sidewalk, or whatever. That's part of this. So, yeah, you know, within two years or whenever you want to do.
So the board says, time to put them in.
Yep.
They have to put them in.
It's my understanding, Ron, sole and exclusive discretion.
Yeah.
Discretion, discretion. But that, the size and scope, the design has to be agreed to by both parties. But it would go forward. Heather, I don't know if you had a conversation with Mike, but that was, I went into great detail with him on these.
Yeah, everything
Everything I said?
Everything you said is the way I understand it as well.
Okay.
Good job.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion. Is that what you were looking at?
I'm just asking whether we're comfortable in moving forward with the motion or, or,
Well, we'll find out.
Okay.
I make a motion that we authorize the signing of the agreement as noted, coming from Mr. Lucas, for our chairman to approve the agreement.
On behalf of the
On behalf of, we want to approve.
Yeah.
On behalf of the zoning commission, the agreement.
Okay, okay, on behalf of the zoning commission.
The full agreement, okay. Okay, we have a motion to approve the agreement as submitted and for, yeah, we'll agree. Because I understand it, right?
Authorize.
And execution by the board chair.
Were there any other issues that you had?
So we're in discussion still. I, you're looking at my notes here. I
I, no, I've, no.
I asked, my first question was, can we revoke the waiver? He said, no, you're, what you've, what we've done with the motion before to give the waiver and the fact that disagreement has been approved, at least in his legal stand and by that party, he did not feel as we could revoke. That was my other question, was revoking the waiver.
So that means right now, no sidewalk.
Until we
Right now.
Correct.
He's going ahead with construction
Correct.
With no sidewalk.
Correct. Correct. That was my, hold on, okay, questions as I went through it. I was asking the, why the word limited was repeated in here a couple times. If, then when I read it, there wasn't any limitation. So, I'm not the lawyer, but I was like
It's the what we call the weasel words that are, that are put into contracts that are the loopholes that can hardly change.
Yeah.
That's why we need lawyers.
Yeah, so limited is, is three times in this page two.
Was there anything else on any other pages you had in your
No, the rest was the counterparts, entire green severability, modification, yeah, it's all standard. That's all I had. So
So we have a
We have, we have a motion on the, on the, on the table for approval of the agreement and execution by the chair.
I'll second.
We, and we have, we have a second. Any further discussion on approval of the agreement? There being none, roll call, Heather, please.
Mr. Ruppert?
Yes.
Mr. Terriaco?
Yes.
Mr. Linganfelter?
Aye.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Eiffelise?
Yes, thank you, members. He's handing me the pen for those who are not watching. Thank you, members. The other item on old business has been tabled on PUD and residential conservation development. The last item on our, on our agenda this evening is election of chairperson and vice chair. This is my, twelve months are in. Wow, does time fly fast.
Yes, you sure do.
You're having fun, right? So what, what are the wishes of the board? Election of chair and vice chair, starting in May?
Who's the vice chair now?
It's Mr. Peterson.
Rich.
Guess what Rich is?
In absentia.
That's what he gets for not being here. Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we appoint or elect Mr. Peterson to become the chairman.
We have a motion on Florida for Mr. Peterson as the next chairperson for the board.
I'll second.
We have a second. Any discussion on the chair? Mr. Peterson isn't here, so there'd be a, roll call, please, Heather.
Mr. Linganfelter?
Aye.
Mr. Ruppert?
Aye.
Mr. Eiffelise?
Yes.
Mr. Terriaco?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Thank you, members. Next item here is consideration for the vice chair, who is currently Mr. Peterson, to move on as vice chair of the zoning commission. Do we have any nominations?
Mr. Chairman, I saw a move, do we add Andy Linganfelter as vice chair?
We have a motion for Andy Linganfelter as vice chair.
I'll second, you want to say?
Just gonna ask him if he's, we have a second.
Can I do that?
We have a second. And we have a second, Andy's vice chair. Any further discussion? Any further nominations? If not, roll call, please, Heather.
Mr. Terriaco?
Yes.
Mr. Eiffelise?
Yes.
Mr. Ruppert?
Aye.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Linganfelter?
Abstain.
Thank you, members. Appreciate it. I enjoyed chairing this, this last twelve months. I really, really did. You made it pleasant, fun, and thank you, Heather, for all the support.
Well, Rich, I, I'm gonna, I go out there and say that I think you did a fantastic job.
Okay.
I thought it was, I thought it was very, I thought you ran a very nice zoning commission
term, and I, I thought we made a lot of significant positive changes for the township. I think your attention to detail and your ability to manage the process was, was exceptional. And I thank you for the, for the year that you gave us as the chairman.
Well, I was worried you were gonna renominate. I, it was preparation, but thank you, thank you for saying that, really. No, it was, you made it pleasant. It's a good, good, good working group. We had a lot of good discussions. Went through a lot.
Yeah, we did.
Very much so.
I think it's, I think it's important to note that when you have a good group together, works well together, I think you can get a lot accomplished.
Get a lot accomplished, yeah.
And I think we got a lot accomplished, and I think we work well together, and I, I appreciate everybody that sits at this table for the work that they do. And I, I'm glad that I'm a part of it, so.
I'll echo that.
Here, here, I agree. You have a group that can, you know, we can have differences of opinions, but to be able to sit down and discuss them and agree, that's, that's the biggest thing.
Biggest thing.
I find nowadays unfortunate is not there, but I feel very comfortable, especially being a zoning commission member for quite many years.
How many years are you at now, Frank?
Well, I've been the longest.
I know that, but are you over thirty?
Yeah.
Good for you.
My.
Thirty-one years.
Ooh.
Going on thirty-two.
My silver anniversary is this year. I got twenty-five going.
Wow.
I have four months.
And, 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 and I think it's appropriate to recognize the, while we're in the process, recognize the efforts of our alternatives, both Ashley and, and
Ron.
Ron, for the work that you've done.
Thank you.
You guys have been very capable and competent, and you're always, whenever either one of you takes a chair here at the table, you're always well-versed in the issues and you're doing the research. Well, and you guys, I mean, but you come up here, you don't just kind of guess along. And I mean, you, I know that you do the work, and that's important, and I think it's, I commend you for, for taking that job seriously because it could be something that most people as an alternative would kind of just go through the motions. But we've got two very, very capable and competent people that whenever there's a need and it comes up occasionally to have somebody fill in that we don't have to worry about, you know, having four versus five. I, we, I think the, the people that we have to come in and take the role make, keep this board completed five. So we appreciate the work, we really do. At least I do. So, thank you.
Here, here, I agree.
Here, here. Very good. Thank you for saying that, Andy, thank you. Our, our next meeting is May the second, with Mr. Peterson as chair. So, a shout out to Rich here before the May second, we gotta surprise him. There being no further business, zoning commission meeting stands adjourned.
Nice job.
Thank you.
Very good job.
Thank you.
He deserves it.
Thank you very much.
Very, very well, very, very good job.